Mr. Bellman?
Here.
Mrs. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes, here.
Yes, here.
I guess.
What's that?
Run.
You can just run?
Just run.
Oh, that's true.
Okay. We've all looked at the agenda, I assume. Need a motion to accept the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Bellman?
Here.
Mrs. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Here twice. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes from the special board meeting held on June 27th.
Seven.
Second. Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Public participation this evening?
I have none.
Thank you. Item number six, special commendations. We have a motion to accept the following donations. Four thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars from PTO for elementary field trips. And one thousand three hundred and six dollars, seven, seven cents from, from PTO to the elementary for the end of school parties. And two hundred and twelve dollars, twenty cents from PTO for chalk and for playgrounds. Motion.
Second.
Mrs. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Treasures report.
Okay, let me fix my notes. Expenditures did exceed revenue in the month of June by seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. This was due to all of the end of year purchases. Mainly, all the purchases came out of our SOR grants. We got to spend the majority of that right at the end of the year. So we were able to purchase some curriculum, ESC services, summer school, and additional Chromebooks. Revenue did increase from fifty, from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24 by 2.8 million. This was due mainly, we had some increase in state aid, but it was really due to property tax increases. Expenses also increased during fiscal year '24 by 1.6 million. This was, the majority of it was due to the end of year, the grant expenditures that we were do, able to do with SOR grants. The ending cash balance for FY '23 was 15.8 million. And we ended fiscal year '24 with 17.5. So there was an increase of 1.7 million from fiscal '23 to fiscal '24. I was also able to close the books right on July 1st. So that afternoon, Dawn was able to process payroll, and then Lanay was able to get some invoices that were payable on July 1st, she was able to get them out. Couple other items that I do have on my agenda is purchases for, they came, there are purchases that were in '24, but they came in during '25. Those, The Hill, The Flynn, Stan Sheet Music, EJ Therapy, Verdica Marathon, and Scott Scriven. Those were all purchases that were made in fiscal '24, but they came in '25. So I just need your permission to be able to pay them in, in the current fiscal year. And then we also have our liability insurance for the year. It did increase by $6,400. This was due to, it always increases when we purchase a new school bus, but also property tax increase will also raise our liability insurance as well. And then the last item I have is my records retention schedule. All of these items, I have submitted to the auditor of state for destruction. This is per my record retention schedule. And it's, I do this every year. So these are all items that are ready to be disposed of. And that is all that I have.
Now entertain the motion, or any questions. So if, are there any questions for Mrs. Donald?
Just, I guess I'd just like to comment on two documents that I appreciate, not that I don't appreciate all of them. It's the report that we get that shows the expenditures over 5,000. And then I think the year comparison, especially being a new board member, kind of like knowing what to target that at. So, appreciate both of those. You did notice on there the Vo Egg dust collector, is that new, was it like a?
It was an item that was broke. So we needed to replace it.
Okay, good, good. So that'll provide some new opportunities in our.
Correct.
Okay, good. And then also, and this kind of comes in my report from the peer center, just thought it would be for the good of the group, this interest income that we're able to take advantage of, which we know how long that's going to be, and it probably helps a little bit with inflation and cost of goods, but maybe just could share a little bit about how we're able to take advantage of our account balances and the interest income that's coming in off of those. Do you know what I mean? Like, well, just our CDs and our money market stuff that we have money in, this interest income is not typical.
Correct. So, the, for last year, our interest income, we were getting right around 35,000 a month on our CDs alone. So, interest itself, we went from maybe 14,000 a year in interest, to last year, we were close to 300,000 for the whole year for interest. I know that it's going to go back down, and I do have it projected to slowly start creeping back down. But everything that, well, the, the investments, the CDs that I have, they just did come up for renewal, and I reinvested all of them again in a 12-month CD. I do everything through Park National, and the interest does help with all the purchases that we were able to do, like some of the extracurriculum that we were able to purchase through the school year. That alone was allotted from, come from the, the CD interest. And also additional Chromebooks that we needed was able to come from that line item as well. But that is one, one item that not a lot of people talk about. It's just, no reason, we just don't bring that up a whole lot. But interest, yeah, in, the last year's interest was considerably higher than previous years. But I do have it going down slightly for the upcoming school year.
It's just nice to be able to capitalize, being in a good financial position as a district, able to capitalize on that interest income.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I just keep taking and reinvesting right back in. So, yep, I put it into another 12-month.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
That's all.
And then also to start on July 1st.
And then to start, yeah.
That's really good. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. I didn't know if you, I put the differences between what I forecasted and what was actual.
I'm wondering if you're going to say it.
The revenue forecasted, I did 14,777,000. Actual was 14,804,000. So, revenue actual came in at 26,000 higher. Forecast expenses came in at, I forecasted at 15,103,000. Actual was 15,47,000, but came in 55,000 less. So, overall, I was very close between both of them. Yeah, and I was pretty ecstatic about actually both of them as well, so, yeah.
As you should. Great job. Yep, great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
What's that, Winger?
Mrs. Donald?
Winger's, Winger seconded. Yes, thank you.
Was it?
Okay. Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindemann?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Napier. Glad to have you all here. And as we introduce Mr. Dan O'Broombo with Fannie Howie, he's going to present the proposal there for our bus garage renovation expansion at the current site down by Taylor Street. But as he gets ready to go, I'd like to thank Mr. Napier, Mrs. Lindemann, Mr. Kirkpatrick, and Mr. Grubb for spending, and Mrs. Donald as well, spending a lot of time with us here over the past, what, couple weeks, really digging into this. And Dan, of course, your, your leadership as well there. So, looking forward to hearing what you have to say and, and sharing this out with us.
Yeah, thank you. Well, we have been working on this sometime and exploring different options, and we'll provide a couple of the background here. This is just an area, I'll give you some property lines, and where the building's located, where the buses are staged, backed, or under parked. And we initially wanted to go to the east, which should be in this lawn area, with some sort of expansion to, to, to the ability to, to bus maintenance, which you essentially just have one day. But we ran into some unpleasant surprises here. Some utilities, easements, and such, they're just, just in a way, and it's not practical, how to cause effect is moving those. So we moved on from that idea, and we said, well, what if we go out to the west? Now, just for orientation purposes, north is this way, and, and our production department decided to flip this somewhere, you know, kind of keep, this north is now here, okay? And so, this just shows that there'd be some preparation, we would save an existing office there, we reused some of the bathrooms. This shows more detail as to what that looks like. The addition, which is right through here, is about 1,000 square feet, 945. You see the storage room up in the top part of that drawing, top grade. The office down below, a little kitchenette, right in here, and then this is that driver area. They currently sit like in here, and kind of crowds that, that bus maintenance area. So, anytime we do a project like that, we have to be aware of the ADA regulations, so we changed that bathroom to accommodate ADA regulations. Let's see, we, there's a little bit of an upgrade to this bathroom, left the existing office. So with this solution, there's two full bays now for bus maintenance. Just a couple of elevations to show what that looks like from the front. So you've got the two bays, I think we've got a new door coming in here, as I recall, and then the addition off to the right. Then we're going to re-site it and change the roof out, so some heating upgrades, electrical upgrades. There's a panel that needs to be replaced to give us capacity. Electric service is back in this corner, back in here, and we need to relocate that. And then there's some other things, the communications and service. Communication and, but, yeah, two different kind of communications come in that corner as well. Just a little bit of an isometric, maybe a better view of that, help you visualize it. And then the budget. We spent some time looking at this and talking about it, and aside did a little bit. Bottom line, it's about 735,000, hard and soft costs combined. You look at this, if you were cleared out to bid, this would be more close to that, is what we would advertise for the budget. And that would be our goal for the contractor, to not exceed that by 20% by law, and ideally be under that. And we just gave a few details in here, the renovation budget, new construction, and then there's some of these, well, the total, plus some of the tipicals that, that you'd see in any kind of commercial construction, the overhead profit, general condition, things that contractors build into their prices. We put a little bit of a buffer here, this cost escalation contingency. We're open that that goes away, but it's a buffer to kind of protect our budget. So again, this is a budget, it's not the actual cost. We've got to go through a bid process, we have to finish designing it, and go through a bid process to actually get that. And hopefully we get a lot of interest from local contractors. One thing to keep in mind, this is not, I mean, it's, it's a large project, but it's, it's relatively simple in the sense that, oh, you're not going to see the real big contractors come after this. But I'm going to point out the, we're bonding in there someplace, oh, here, I'm sorry, on this side, bonding. Just keep in mind, we have to have contractors that are bondable, that carry a bond, okay? So it's not your average home builder or whatever. So then these nine construction costs, we just put those out there because a lot of times people just forget about that, that there's significant costs there too. Getting a survey, doing soil investigation, we want to make sure we don't have any surprises there. Agency approvals, that's just your building permit. Technically, plan approval, but everyone calls it permit. Construction testing, what happens throughout, that's third-party testing, just checking a few things, and these are, again, are budgets, okay? The only item in there that, we put a fee together that we kind of projected what we thought it would cost us, so that one's probably close. The other ones are close, but again, they're placeholders, just so you don't forget about it. So when you combine this with that, your total investment is about 734. Any questions on the solution, the budget? I have a timeline also, if you're interested in seeing the timeline.
Could you explain the general conditions piece?
Yeah, general conditions is just all the miscellaneous things that a contractor does. I doubt that they have a trailer, but you know, if they're bringing up a trailer just to store materials and equipment, they might, I don't know. But it's kind of their cost of doing business. And then, that's what, and then they're trying to put all contractors, of course, want to have a little bit of profit on our project. And then this performance bond, it's calculated at 1.5, but depends on the contractor and their, and their bonding ability, sometimes it runs 3%. I think I'd even see it go higher than 3%.
So, again, just for clarification, the, the performance bond, the general has to have that, but then what about the subs under here? I forgot to ask that.
Yeah, no, the, the general, essentially provides coverage, sure. Okay, yeah, and he's asking the subs to provide some sort of assurances, you know, between him and subs. But the general, because when it holds contract with you, he's wanting to have to provide a guarantee that work's going to be done, and so there comes the performance bond. And in my career, I think I've lived in twice, if I remember, or I had to go to a bonding company to finish out a project because of contractor without a business. So, it's not very often, but a while all required.
Could you share about the timeline a little bit?
Yeah, sure. A little bit of a draft we got up here, that just kind of actually backs up a little ways, we've been working on this conceptual budget for a while. Can you guys see that okay? You know, so we all started. But, so, we would move into, we would take that conceptual, and we start to refine that, it will put more detail into it. I don't think you guys are planning on moving forward to this meeting, maybe, but if you move to the next meeting, that shows us starting somewhere in the middle of August. And then, so we have a couple of months in there of putting together all the, all the details, okay? So what you're seeing right now is conceptual, yeah. You really can't build from that, you can't get your permit. There's going to be a lot of detail that goes, you know, putting things together, architects, engineers, people designing technology, everything that's needed for the project. Structural, from foundations to the trucks, and all that will be delineated in drawings and specifications, so they have a full bid package. That bid package is used for the plan approval or the permitting, as well as bidding and construction. So, we're thinking a couple of months we have that pulled together. And then I suggested some advertising dates, just to kind of demonstrate how long this takes. Glad to have, had a couple of times, you can learn on your, your website, you'll post twice in the local newspaper, have this, I don't remember if all that, if you've done that right.
Yep.
And then I suggested, pretty good, it's always good to have contractors come in and have an opportunity, if they see it, they usually take their numbers a little more, otherwise they're guessing a little bit. All of the drawings will be pretty clear. And I suggested a bid date. We'd have plan approval going on during that process, just so we wouldn't wait on that. And then, if we, if, if, if the board awards something here November, contracts will be prepared, and they have a lot of time to get long lead items for. And understand, the process is, when they get a contract, they start sending us shop drawings. And, and the shop drawing is their way of demonstrating that they understand and are following our specifications. We put multiple manufacturers in the specification. So they will tell us what manufacturer, what model number, that sort of thing, we'll go through, review all that. Once we approve it, then they can order. The important thing here is, there's several months here where they can get things like electric panels and long lead items on, on order, so there's no excuse to get done timely. Once we get a contractor on board, they may say five months, you know, maybe if they can start earlier, they might even get in earlier, if you guys in earlier, I don't know. But this is a, just a draft schedule, just to help you understand the steps. Too often people say, yeah, let's do this, and you have it done tomorrow, and you start turning dirt in a month. There's a lot of steps between here and there.
So, Kale, I guess, this is a question for you, but how much maintenance do we do in the summertime, like, oh, like bus maintenance, and well, is this, how much does this affect that, I guess?
Well, we're pretty hot and heavy from the day we're out of school until, given our expectations this year, we're, so. Yeah, I mean, it's busy, but out in the bathroom, it, it slacks me off.
And it's kind of that toss-up then between the busy of that, or the busy of our buses running, right? And which is the, yeah.
Spring, yeah, the spring.
Right.
So, I mean, I would say we're going to go to keep the one bay easy and go on, wrestle.
Yeah, right.
Nothing, issue of much.
From a contractor's perspective, this timeline is very appetizing. We talked about that yesterday. And Dan definitely took all kinds of lists of questions, but yeah, this is, this should put us in, would put us in a good position to attract good contractors, it would feel good to a contractor to have some work on the books for 2025 and, and all of that. So this is very, from a contractor's perspective, very appetizing.
Yeah, anytime you squeeze that schedule, prices start to go up, or contractors are just too busy to do the work. So, yeah, we like to bid them early. And of course, you're not going to start construction on an addition until the weather comes, so that's why you see that starting early April.
Can you go back to the previous slide? I just want to add a little context to some of the questions that you had already answered yesterday, but first of all, the, the building itself right now, as we decided, what, over 50 years old, our current?
Yeah.
Bus garage?
Six, no.
Right. And, you know, the board has approved over the last several years, millions of dollars in, I don't know what it is, a lot of money, in buses. So protection over what we purchased, which is another thing that's in favor, maybe, of this, this project. So, Dan, just for the good of the group, we get this back, it's still within the 20%, but we're just not feeling it. Not that we want to spend all this money and not feel it, but the upfront costs, but we don't technically have to award, right?
Yeah, you don't have to award, no. But the only way you know the true cost is to put it out to bid.
Sure.
And have bids come in from contractors that are bonded, and so that'll, that'll give us the true cost. Now, sometimes, we'll put in a little bit of a cushion, I, I'm showing one here, just to help this budget, but in the actual, you know, I might, I might suggest for our team that we still hold 10, 15, 20,000 dollars in allowance. Okay, we can talk about that later, but a lot of times it's nice to keep a little cushion in that contractor's bid, just in case we run into unforeseen conditions, okay? And you can work off that allowance. And if you don't use it, it just comes out of their contract. But that's, that's a detail for later.
Can you speak a little bit to what we took out yesterday, that almost sixty thousand dollar contingency?
Yeah, there's a design contingency that a lot of times when we're at this conceptual stage, we like to hold that, that, that kind of a cushion that just says, we don't have all the detail yet. We, we got a pretty good idea, but we don't have as clear of an understanding as we would once we got into these phases, okay? The more you get into it, the more you know. So I, I reached out to our team and basically said, this is an overly complex project. We feel we understand it pretty well. So the automat, we use an estimator to create this, we've worked with him for decades. And he automatically puts that design contingency into this phase. But I guess I'd have reached out to the team and said, do we really need it? Or do we know this project well enough that we feel that we don't need that cushion? And, and everyone, so perspect, right, is to be sure. So I took it out.
And I guess my last comment is just appreciate all the detail. I mean, you guys see there's even the printing, the advert, like, having a glimpse of what this costs, that there's not a lot of surprises is key. So appreciate the due diligence.
The other thing I'll just add is that we had, at one time, like with the previous board before Shelley and Christine got on, we were looking at possibly putting, putting it here.
Yep.
And basically found, you know, through, kind of Kale said this, just as far as traffic and that, there's a lot that goes on in this building and that. And again, to protect assets, having it there seems like a good thing. So just to kind of keep that in mind, this has not been a decision or that has been rushed in any way, and it should not be. So, so thank you for this.
Sure, sure. Well, and there's, there's a lot of, a lot of help in here. I mean, we, we created a, well, we decided to go this direction. We created a concept based on what we felt made sense, based on everything we gathered. And then Kale jumped in there and really helped decide the thing. Deals weighed in on it. Gary's been active throughout. So yeah, it's, it's been a real nice team never getting to that. I think we got a pretty good solution here.
I think the only thing, sorry, I said last comment, but here's another. Few of us got to have the opportunity to hang out with the bus drivers on Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So if you haven't been down to that building for a while, it kind of feels like it's fifty years old. For one thing, you know, you've noticed that we are not the school district that has a bus parked out front with a sign on it that says bus drivers needed. It's a very important piece of what happens here on the day-to-day, whether it's extracurricular or, you know, whatever. And so just that team and what goes on with that. So from a morale standpoint and everything, I just appreciate, again, the due diligence that's gone in to think about what the bus drivers do for us daily. A prime example would be when we had a little bit of a need to get kids home on a kind of an emergency situation last year. I don't, Kale didn't have anybody to just hit decline on her phone, but they were here in minutes and got stuff, got our kids. So we need to make sure that they are, that that is continued to be focused on. So I appreciate that too.
Thank you, thank you, Dan.
Sure.
All right, well, yeah, again, thank you, Mr. Obrando, for, for your work there. Just one update too, this morning, I want to thank Mr. Bellman for attending there. We, we pulled in our first responders, Knox EMA, Amy Seward, JT Deschamps. I could go around the room to some of our people as well, also Rick Lanusa and Rick Schaefer from Mount Vernon City Schools. And reviewed, again, the reunification site and plan, the Knox County reunification site plan that would be held at the Energy Fieldhouse at Mount Vernon City Schools. So again, what we're looking at doing is on the August, Wednesday, August fourteenth, third day there before we start school, is taking our staff, our bus drivers, all down to Energy Fieldhouse to get a sense of, explore that facility and get a sense of how that would be set up and arranged. So I thought it was a positive meeting this morning, lots of things thrown out there, always is with those. But really what I, what I want to share here is that collaboration, that partnership with our first responders, not only here in Fredericktown, Chief Hines was there, and RSR O'Paxton, but also with Knox County and then Knox County Schools. That's significant and monumental in the fact that that's, it's almost unheard of. That, that was a huge piece of that, that we had that support and that partnership. So just wanted to throw that out there to, to, to the board here, to everybody listening. As far as then the superintendent's consent agenda items that we would have, we do have a motion to approve a delegate and an alternate as official representatives of the Fredericktown Board of Education to the School Board Association Annual Conference. That is, can't believe we're talking about that already, but it is time. That's November ten through twelve this fall, two thousand twenty-four. So, Mr. Napier, we would need some delegate and an alternate to enlist in there.
Is this different than a legislative delegate? Is this, or how is this different?
I have the same question.
It's almost the same thing. So usually the legislative person is the delegate, and then someone just needs to be the backup.
We didn't tell you what you're signing up for.
Yeah. It's, it's actually, Shelley, it's actually pretty entertaining. It really is. I mean, I, I was the delegate last year, and I, I actually, I enjoyed it.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just knew that I'd gotten an email saying something about being the legislative delegate, so I was just wondering how this was different.
Yep.
Okay, but it's not different?
It's the same thing.
So, Binger?
Would you like to?
Sure.
Follow me?
Sure.
I'll be the alternate.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B would be to approve Public School Works, that's our online training system, annual fee of thirty-five hundred dollars. Also to approve an agreement with Tri-County ESC for Medicaid School Program Coordination for this upcoming school year. Then also Ohio ESC for summer services for behavior consulting at a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. And that would be for the summer months. We would have to be retroactive, but approving this retroactive to May fifteenth through August fifteenth of two twenty, of two thousand twenty-four. Also to approve the use of a blanket and super blanket purchase orders for amounts not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars per order. And also you would see attached there or linked in there would be a motion to approve the removal of old inventory items. And also then item G would be a motion to approve the final reading of the cell phone policy as presented in June. This would ban cell phone use for K-12 during school hours. They would be required to have their cell phones turned off and in their locker and or book bag. Item H would be a motion to approve the MOU with Fredericktown Local School Board and FEA for an additional supplemental contract position of acquire accompaniment for twenty-four, twenty-five. That would be incorporated into the negotiated agreement and paid at Group Five. Also MOU with FEA to establish a program that would offer graduate-level courses and a subscription or and/or a bundle at a single price. And this is a program provided through Ohio Education Association, OEA, that our, our association here would like to take advantage of. It would reimburse members at two hundred dollars with a grade of B or better. Then we would have on item J, employment, some adjustments there. Happy to announce there Hannah Art, our district social worker, increasing her time from two and a half days to four days per week for this upcoming school year. And then substitute custodian as well as, again, volunteers and chaperones for football games, band festivals, and band camp. You can see those there. We do have one to be voted on separately, and that would be for Lanny Wanger also to be a band camp instructor for the school year. I think that is all.
Motion to accept item ten. I do have Bellman and Wanger. I do have a question. So, and with Hannah going from two and a half to four, that, because we took her from five to two and a half two and a half last year. And that doesn't have to be reposed in, no, I'm not even like, okay, I just wasn't sure how that.
Yep.
Just ask if Hannah's, because you're going from two and a half to four, it needs to be reposed in or anything like that.
Is four considered full-time, but we're not?
Teacher's full-time is five days a week. So she's, she's almost considered like three-quarters time.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Bellman?
I, I would, oh.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to thank Gary and Adam and Ryan for your work on the cell phone policy. Like, this is the fourth meeting that it's been on here. We've had obviously discussions and other meetings. You know, like, we all have varying opinions on the details and all that kind of stuff. But applaud the work to get that put together and to put that in place. I also want to acknowledge, like, you know, kids have had phones in school for a long time, and I feel, I know it's pulling back the reins on that. We know there's going to be some challenges with that, but I think it is what the best for kids at the end of the day. But the work through, you know, all the details, it's not going to be a perfect thing, but appreciate the work that got put into that. And I'd like to speak for everybody who's thanking you guys for, thank you for working on that, so.
Thank you for your leadership as well, as a board. Anything else?
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes. Item eleven? You have a motion to accept.
Sorry, so moved.
Second. Thank you.
Mrs. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.
Mrs. Winger?
Committee reports, we start with the legislative liaison, Mrs. Winger.
I don't have very much to share because the general's supposedly planning to recess sometime right around their last meeting. And I believe they intend to begin recess until after November election, so there won't be a lot to report on. Really, the only thing that has happened since our last meeting is that House Bill Two was signed into law by Governor Dewine. That's the capital appropriations bills, the basically the capital budget. And there was, there is six hundred million in funding included in that for school construction and renovation for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, which is part of the rebuild of Ohio School Program. That commission, if you don't know, manages the K-12 public school facility program, including planning, developing, constructing, new and renovated facilities. So that was, everything else, there's a lot of pending stuff that's kind of been sent to Governor Dewine. Don't know that there's been any action on that, so there might be more to come if some of those bills end up being signed or otherwise put into law. But I was going to ask Heather, on that, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, how is that funding available? I tried to research that a little bit, but didn't find a whole lot of information. Is that grants and?
It's usually grants, and then you have to get a hold of them to see if you qualify for it.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what we used to build the K-12 building.
Okay, all right. I just traced all that.
Yeah, there's certain qualifying, you know, circumstances that you have to meet with that, with them to do that, yeah.
Right, okay, all right.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Well, we haven't met, but this is kind of back to the bus garage. I do wanted to say that, oh, we kind of forgot to mention that that has been planned for in our forecast and et cetera. So a couple of times, we just thought I should point that out that we have planned for.
Yes.
Potential.
Yes, it was in the forecast I just ended, and it's in the current forecast.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Knox County Career Center?
Well, yeah.
Well, do you have her, or does somebody have her?
Mrs. Lindeman does.
Does Mrs. Lindeman, she's there.
I apologize, you guys have to hear from me here for a little bit. So I thought that, I've had too many meetings in my life where I'm kind of like, what is that organization? What do they do? So the Fredericktown Community Development Foundation, why that's important to report out at this meeting, I just wanted to read you their goals. So that goal is, their goal is to foster growth of existing businesses, continue seeking business expansion, and promote economic development, which obviously affects our school district. So just thought it would be kind of important to share that maybe. So a couple of updates from that meeting. Streetscape slash, or I should say Streetscape ribbon cutting, Harvest Fest, vendor market, mark your calendars, October fifth. That's the first Saturday in October. It's going to be a winged or of a celebration, lots of exciting stuff going on there, so we're really excited about that. Should really bring some people to town. So the financials showed a little bit extra, just from the banner money coming in, vendor market that's been going on uptown on that first Saturday. We have Fair on the Square, I believe is what it's called, in August coming up. So there's going to be a petting zoo, and businesses, businesses have sponsored that, et cetera. So the design committee, we actually meet tomorrow, and we're going to be talking about some planter selections. Benches and trash cans have been ordered, and when they come in, they'll be put in place. And then we'll also be discussing some wayfinding signage up there. If you're not on social media, or if you are, you know that there's a lot going on with the Ackerman Project. There's new signage out on State Route thirteen, kind of giving direction, again, with the goal of this group being to foster economic development, hopefully people stop to see what there is to see. And then they come uptown and they visit our local businesses. So Kathy Daniels, Don Beidwitz, there's been a group of people kind of spearheading that. Jim Blanchard and Kathy went down to the state, and actually Senator Andrew Brenner and Representative Beth Lear approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project to help with the walkways. And so, and another shout-out to the Cozing for all the volunteer work that has gone on. They have this retiree program that does a lot for the community. So they're putting in concrete paths, they're going to have picnic benches, and it's just a great project. It's a great, it's been a great asset to our community, but I think we're just kind of making it a little bit more known. Little update on the fireplace project up by the brick house. As you remember, our students of Project Lead the Way had a lot of involvement in the pre-work that went on to that. It's a little bit out of, at a standstill. It was kind of a borderline project that would need a permit or not. We happened to be under the radar a little bit because we're doing Streetscape, and so the state drove through and put a little bit of a halt. We're just literally inches over the height that then forced us into a permit process. So you probably saw that happening, and now it's a little bit paused. So if you see Kathy around town and she looks a little sad, that's fine. No, anyways, appreciate that project, and it's going to be wonderful when it's done. I think that's all for FCDF. I think I'm up again.
Knox County Career Center.
This one's really short, though. Career Center meeting was last Thursday. Like I had mentioned, with Heather and our interest income, the Career Center is also capitalizing on that, and she shared that with the board, which is always great to hear. And they approved a resolution to amend and restate their plan for makeup school hours. And Jordan gave an update on the three large, very large. Had a picture of the crane that brought them in, HVAC units that were installed at the Career Center. They've had a few hiccups, not to the fault of the Career Center. We're still having a little bit of ramifications from COVID. And when things are manufactured and plants got shut down, and then they restarted and whatever. So I think one of the units showed up with not the guts for what they need to heat. He had a compressor go out already, and so just, yeah, that's, that's kind of what's going on, on there. But they're, same as us, moving forward, we're just getting things in place and then plan for a month when school starts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Business Advisory Council, Mr. Bellman?
Business Advisory Council, Mr. Bellman?
We have not met since our last meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, July 31st.
Policy, Mr. Bellman was quoted.
We also haven't met. Do we meet, will we meet again in the fall?
October, right? Yep. I think that's, usually right, September, end of September. Twice a year. Yeah. Does any board members have anything to report on?
I'm gonna be shocked that I do. So for those of you that went to see Footloose, we had seven freddies in this production. Two of the leads were 2020 graduates. We had a staff member, Mr. Holm that helps make, that helps a ton with the production. I just think that that really speaks to that program and the opportunities that our kids are given here and that they've taken that and gone on to do it on stage at the Wood or in Royal Theater or whether they're doing it. So, yeah, I just thought that was great. We saw it on Sunday, it was good. I'm always blown away because I can't sing, so here in Kylie and Molly and Steve Herbs and all of them get up and belt it out, it's pretty amazing. So we're just fortunate that seven freddies were represented in that production.
Yeah. Yep. Administrative reports.
Do schools go recharge, do they have batteries?
I attended yesterday and today Focus 3 training, trainer on trainer type models. So it will be a group of folks, there will be four of us there, Adam, Ryan, Cindy Truex and myself. Gina will be pulled into the fold as well. And we look at, working with Gary to make sure we set up, sharing this information throughout the school. Also next week, there's the training, another recharge for administrators, not enough already, we did it last year. It's a good opportunity for administrators. I don't know, Heather, are you going now? I felt the variety of us going down. And there's Quentin, I think, who's though, and there's the concurrent sessions that happen all throughout, but usually everyone has somewhere to take their focus. And it's a good opportunity for us as colleagues to be able to work with Gary, interact with each other and just kind of start to follow a little more.
Yep. Also, follow up on the R factor, Focus 3 training. I know it's short notice, I just sent it to you right before the board meeting, a registration link for an informational session hosted by Jennifer Lawson, who did the training the past two days here. That would be on Monday from nine to noon. I, if you want to attend that virtually, go ahead and fill out the registration. She did mention to me today that they were gonna also record it, so she might be able to make it available again. But it would be a good overview of the R factor, maybe even a refresher in Focus 3 there. So just, you should see that in your email here as soon as you check. Nobody from FEA or OC, so the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's the first time. Long time and hasn't been.
Mrs. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Napier?
Yes.